The time is 7:00 PM on December 19th. I'll call to order this meeting of the Bridgewater Town Council. The meeting is being aired live and recorded for future broadcasts. I'd ask everyone to please join me in a salute to our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
The council has not been made aware of the passing of any military veterans. However, I'd ask everyone to please join us for a moment of silence to honor all those veterans who have passed. Thank you. The first item on our agenda this evening is the approval of minutes from December 5th, 2023. I was absent, so I will abstain. I ask others if you are absent, please abstain as well. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Tagging.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item on the agenda is item B, announcements from the president. I just wanted to take a few minutes to thank the Bridgewater DPW, the police department, the fire department, and the town administration for their handling of the storm. I know it was a very busy period for town staff, and the support and response was appreciated. As I understand it, at the peak, about 60% of Bridgewater was without power. National Grid is responsible for bringing that power back online. And as I understand it, it's now down to about 30%, about 3,000 outages. And I think the remaining outages are the most complicated, so that's what they're working through at the moment. Or at the moment. If anybody in town does have questions about that, please reach out to the town. They'd be happy to assist you. But again, thank you to all the town staff that responded. No additional announcements from me. We can move on to item C, proclamations. We have no proclamations this evening. Item D, citizen open forum. If anyone from the public would like to speak, we'd invite them to come up. Say your name and address. Please let me hear marks to three minutes.
Rushing up here.
Okay. We have none. I'll close the citizen open forum and move on to agenda item E, appointments. We have no appointments this evening. We'll move on to agenda item F, hearings. We have no hearings this evening. So we'll move on to agenda item G, license transactions. We do have quite a few licensed transactions this evening. These tend to happen on an annual basis, so we'll move through them one at a time. The first is petition P 2024-005. This is the annual licensing of establishments with alcohol and attendance licenses. There are 36 licensees that desire authorization to continue this year. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any questions for the town manager? Okay, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item B, petition P 2024-006, the annual licensing of Class 1, Class 2, and Class 3 auto dealers. We have 22 businesses that desire authorization to continue operating. I'd entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second for discussion.
We have a motion in the second. Any discussion? Counselor Perry.
Thank you, through you to the town manager. Mr. Dunn, I think I bring this up every time this list comes on up, but the best auto parts over in the far end of town on Old Plymouth Street, again, does not seem like there's been a whole lot going over there for a long period of time. Do we know the status of their operation and whether they're actually operating business at this point in time?
According to relicensing, they're looking to renew their license, I believe, so they continue to be a business. I can't tell you whether they're a viable business or not, but they do continue to be a business. And they do satisfy the requirements of the building office and the police and fire departments and the tax office, collector's office, so that's about all I have on that one.
All right, thank you very much. Any additional discussions? Any additional questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. The next item, agenda item C, petition P 2024-007, the annual licensing of a common carrier taxi service business. This is Bill's Taxi in Town. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item G, petition P 2024-008, the annual licensing of common victular licensed established victular, that's a hard word, establishments, non-alcohol. There are 41 businesses that are asking for authorization to continue. And for those listening, this includes SDEXO, who operates at BSU, that count. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item E, petition P 2024-009, the annual licensing of an antique dealer's business. This applies to rocking horse crafts. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any questions for the town? We can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to item F, petition P 2024-010, the annual licensing of secondhand gold/pawn shops. This applies to two businesses that are asking for approval to continue. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Any questions for the town? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Agenda item G, petition P 2024-011, the annual licensing of lodging houses. I would actually, I'd like to make a motion to amend this. There's just a typo. In the opening paragraph, it says five, and there are actually six businesses, so I would like to make a motion to change the word five to six.
Tagging that motion.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. So there are six businesses that are asking for continuation of their license to operate as lodging houses. I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So move to second.
We have a motion and a second for discussion. Any discussion? Dr. Perry.
Yes, thank you again through you to the town manager. I see again, it's listed as all inspections has taken place, but just wanted to confirm as recently, it's been some updates and checking on these facilities to make sure that the safety and upkeep of these buildings. Heard a few things in the past that might be issues with these locations.
No, that, I think Counselor Perry brings up a good point. These are annually inspected. When they are annually inspected, if the inspectors find any health and safety violations, they require those to be fixed or addressed prior to the applications getting to you for renewal. So they have met the requirements of the inspectional services team, but I will say that we hear the same issues.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional discussion? Any additional questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we can move ahead to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item H, petition P 2024-012, the annual licensing of automatic amusements in establishments without alcohol. This applies to six amusements at the Bridgewater Sports Complex. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Any questions for the town manager? Seeing none, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item I, petition P 2024-013, the granting of the transfer of a common victular license. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
Yep, we have a second for discussion. Any discussion? Dr. Perry?
Yes, through you to town manager, just usually, I mean, do we usually get a hearing on these transfers? Or is this standard for what we typically see on this?
This common vics don't require a public hearing. Alcohol licenses would require a public hearing, but this is just simply a common vic, not alcohol.
Thank you.
This is for Nick and Angelo's Pizza. Any additional discussion? Any additional questions for the town manager? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion. Oh, sorry, we can move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. That completes agenda item G. I will move on to agenda item H, presentations. We have no presentations. We'll move on to agenda item I, the town manager's report. Do we have any items in the town manager's report this evening?
Nothing this evening, but certainly if counselors have anything you'd like me to address at next meeting, please feel free to reach out now or anytime over the next couple of weeks.
Thank you. That concludes the town managers.
Eric.
Oh, so sorry.
Yeah. You know, I got the list. It's only a few things, though. Styles and Hertz Park, I'd like to get an update on all that. The wastewater for the prison, I know that meeting had to get rescheduled. Be nice to know what's going on with that when that meeting happens. Then the two things from before the fire station bid, and then what happened at the train station. That's it from me. Thank you.
The, I'm sorry, the train, the platform, the proposed?
No, how the parking situation there.
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Okay.
Thank you.
It's all right, Counselor. What was the first one?
Styles and Hart Park.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor McKinnon.
Counselor Lindy. Through you to the town manager, I'd like to ask that we consider having National Grid come and update us on how they deal with storms. I'm not a happy camper. We'd be honest about it. I think the town has done everything that they possibly can. I just don't think they have.
Thank you, Counselor Lindy.
Yes. I'm just gonna ask if we could add, I've seen a lot of people ask about warming shelters, especially now. If there's a policy procedure, maybe could share that, how that works. Thank you.
Thank you.
I actually got a quick question off that.
Yep, Counselor McKinnon.
Is the senior center open for that right now, if it's needed? For people that don't have power during the days.
During the days.
All right, thank you.
And I forgot, I forgot. I'd like to find out and get an update on what's going on with veterans, with Roddy being out, and what the plans are. I know we have coverage from two towns, but like a permanent plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so just to recap, Styles and Hart, wastewater, fire station, train station parking, national grid update, warming shelter policies and procedures, and then matters.
And National Grid. Oh, you did, okay. Thank you.
And that is a good clarification. National Grid is responsible for bringing the power back online. So it's appropriate for them to keep us in the loop on that. Any additional requests for the town manager's update next time? Okay, seeing none, we'll close item I. Move on to item J, discussions. We have no scheduled discussions this evening. Move on to item K, committee reports. Now, do we have anyone from, yeah, Dr. Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, I just want to report that Downtown Revitalization Subcommittee met last week. Met with Bob Ruley. He shared some updates to his progress, and we'll be getting some more information regarding the new updates on coding going forward, form-based coding, and we'll be looking to meet hopefully at least once a month, every four to six weeks or so, to keep active with his progress and make some more progress with obviously Downtown Revitalization.
Any additional committee reports? Seeing none, we'll move on to item L, legislation for action. We do have two orders that were with Finance Committee because of the power outage. That committee did not meet, so we'll walk through and make a, like everyone, to consider potentially postponing those to the next meeting to give Finance Committee time to react. The first one is Order OFY 24-019, eminent domain order of taking for two-lot parcel on Broad Street. The Budget and Finance Committee did meet this evening.
Yes, Mr. President, we met. Counselor Lindy and myself met before this meeting. We voted to recommend two to zero, understanding that we need to probably postpone that for the next move. But that goes in hand in hand with the Styles and Hart.
And as mentioned, the Finance Committee was unable to meet because of the weather situation. So I would entertain a motion to postpone this to our next scheduled meeting on January 2nd.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion? Okay, let's move to a voice vote then. All those in favor of postponing to the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We'll put it back on the agenda for our next meeting. Moving on to item B, Order OFY 24-020, acceptance of a gift from the Low Kike Trust. I don't know if my pronunciation's correct there. Budget and Finance Meeting met.
Yes, and we voted two to zero to recommend, understanding that the Finance Committee needs to vote as well.
Thank you. Similar to the last one, Finance Committee was unable to meet to discuss this. So given that, I would entertain a motion to postpone additional action until our next scheduled meeting on January 2nd.
So move to second.
A motion, a second, any discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing to the one-two meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Bless.
Motion passes. So those first two will be added to the next agenda. Moving on to item C, Resolution RFY 24-003, Town Council Meeting Dates for 2024. My understanding is there was some discussion at the last meeting about the date of September 3rd. Given that, I would like to make a motion to change the September 3rd meeting to September 10th, so that eliminates the September 3rd meeting and instead has the first meeting in September on the 2nd. We have a second.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second, any additional discussion on that?
So then, just accordingly, we'll be meeting two weeks in a row, 10th and the 17th?
Yes, I think, tried to play around with a few dates, but I think that's what we landed with.
That's fine, thank you.
That's okay.
Thanks to back.
Yeah. All right, we have a motion, a second. We've had discussion. Any additional discussion on that one? Okay, so the motion to amend that 9/3 date to 9/10, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. So now I would entertain a motion to approve as amended.
So move to second.
We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? All right, seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Moving on to item D, Resolution RFY 24-004, FY 2025 Budget Resolution. The Budget and Finance Committee voted three to zero to recommend at their 12-5 meeting. The Finance Committee voted seven to zero to recommend at their 12-4-23 meeting. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So move to second.
So I have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Any additional questions for the town? Seeing none, we'll move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. That concludes agenda item L. We'll move on to agenda item M, old business. We have none. Moving on to agenda item N, new business. We have one item, Order OFY 24-021, contractual buyouts. I'll defer to the town manager for an overview.
Thank you, Mr. President. This piece of legislation funds sick buyback for a number of employees who are retiring or have retired in both the police department and the fire department. And just only as a reminder to the council, we are hitting probably the most expensive few years for buyback payments. And after these few years, then we'll start to see a reduction as people are retiring that don't benefit from the contractual language that was in contracts over a decade ago.
Thank you. Any additional questions for the town manager? Okay. I would entertain a motion to refer to Budget and Finance and Finance Committee.
So move to second.
Second. We have a motion, a second, any additional discussion? Okay, let's move to a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The motion passes. Moving on to agenda item O, citizen comments. Would anyone from the public care to speak? Okay, seeing none, we will move on, we'll conclude citizen comments and move on to agenda item P, Counselor Comments. We will start, Counselor Chase is unable to join us this evening. We'll start with Counselor Murphy.
Yeah, I just wanted to also acknowledge the town staff that worked through the storm, DPW, police, fire, and admin staff here. Just thank you for your work. Thank you for your commitment to getting us through that. Also want to acknowledge some of the businesses in town that have been suffering with the power outages and some of the employees working there. I think it's just important to acknowledge those folks and tough time of year to have to go through that, but hoping for the best for them and the power comes back on soon. I know a lot of people think about themselves individually, but I think it's good to think on that broader scale. So just wanted to acknowledge that and then to wish everybody a happy holiday and a great new year.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor George?
Mr. President, what's the record?
Just keep talking.
Says the one who came late.
War and peace. There's just some things. I'd like to echo what Counselor Murphy said about all of the town employees. I was out a little bit during the storm and, you know, there were people out and about as best they could. Hopefully, the public will be as patient as possible because I know for the power, they had to wait a little bit for the winds to die down, to go up in a bucket truck and, you know, 20, 25 mile an hour winds is not a good thing for, you know, everyone involved, but I know we're getting there slowly but surely. Hopefully, you know, by, you know, Thursday, the latest, we have everyone up and running. I want to extend happy holidays to my fellow counselors, to all the town employees and the residents, and that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor George. Counselor Gallagher.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Just, you know, quickly, as everyone has said, I appreciate the efforts that all the public safety officials have done in the town. And I know that there are many still without power, and as the town manager said, the senior center is available during the day if they need to get down there and you get warm or charge their phones or whatever. Hopefully, in a day or two, everyone will be back on, but it was a pretty messy storm for this town and the whole region. So there's, you know, Bridgewater is not the only town without power. Every town throughout the Massachusetts coast is without power, so just hopefully everyone is safe and that stays that way. And I want to wish everyone a happy holiday season and a happy new year. We'll see what 2024 brings. Could be an interesting year. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gallagher. Counselor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to tack on what everyone else said about this recent storm, I just wanted to mention one other local resource is the East Bridgewater YMCA for folks who might need some relief, hot shower, et cetera. They had posted that they welcome even non-members, so just wanted to mention that. So just a few general thank yous. This is a big season of giving, so I apologize. I'm not going to be able to list every single organization that does amazing things, but a sincere thank you. I do want to shout out a couple of individuals who've been here a long time. The Prisco family, who donates a lot every single year during the holiday season. I know they gave some turkeys to St. Thomas, and they are always giving gifts for single moms and supporting families in ways lots of us don't know about. And then also Josie's Village, always looking out for our seniors in addition to the senior center. Just a couple, just a really special organization locally here. But definitely cannot just got, you know, got the senior center, our churches, our local organizations, and again, just so many individuals who give generously, so thank you. Town staff and people who volunteer in our committees, so same thing. I extend happy holidays and Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to all who have observed and for the holidays coming up. I was actually really fortunate to be part of the Winter Wonderful lighting ceremony, and I just want to share a message that I shared there is that as much as there is so much joy and so much giving, there's also a lot of folks who can't be with us, whether they're abroad or have passed. And having lost a couple of dear ones myself recently, I'd just like to say be good to each other and mostly be kind to yourselves. So happy holidays. Thank you.
Counselor Robinson. And Dr. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Again, echoing the same sentiments as the prior councils. Thank to all the town staff, police, fire, and highway. I saw them all out there diligently today, still working on trying to get areas cleaned up, picking up downed trees, trying to get power back on with the national grid. I know my office is down and out with power now. Most of Main Street is down and out, but hopefully we'll get back online within the next day or so. And similar to what Counselor Robinson said, thanks to all the businesses and organizations out there to help support everyone in the community. Without all their help, we wouldn't be the community that we are. Just as a side note, I want to, you know, I made a couple of posts online, but we did lose a couple of our decorations on the Common. Cindy Lou Who is missing, as well as one of the Lion's Elves. I think they were taken sometime last week, so I certainly would put a request out there for, if anyone sees them, keep your eyes out for them, and hopefully we can get them returned. You know, a lot of work goes into making those decorations, so it's a shame to see them taken unnecessarily. But I do want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season and a bright and happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Perry. Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you. Just want to echo what everyone said about the first responders, the DPW, and all the communications throughout the town staff for the big storm. I mean, everyone wants a white Christmas, but let's be happy that was not snow, because it could always be worse, right? I hope everyone stays safe who doesn't have power right now and stays warm. Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to everyone, and that's about it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McKinnon. Counselor Lindy.
I just wanted to remind everybody that the library is another good place to go. That's been my home away from home with no power and anything. There's internet. There's not a lot of outlets there, but there are plenty of books to read. And they did an outstanding job with the South Shore Foster Closet on the tree. That's where a lot of the gifts went. You could go down there, pick one and do that. I agree 100% with Suzie about Prisco's and Josie's Village being involved in Josie's Village as well. And Prisco's couldn't be a more generous guy. Last night, I had the opportunity to go to Emma's, because that's about the only restaurant in town that actually had power, and everybody else had the same idea. The Winter Wonderful, I just love driving up to Common and seeing that every single night and taking, I take daytime pictures and evening pictures. And I'll just echo Dr. Perry's comments. Cindy Lou Who and the Lion's Elves will, can be returned, no questions asked. I think they should go back. I put it on Bridgewater OT 324. So I just want to wish everybody a happy holiday season and looking forward to a wonderful 2024.
Thank you, Counselor Lindy. I will wrap up here, too. I'd also like to offer Merry Christmas and Happy Hanukkah to those who celebrate. Happy holidays to everybody in town. Would like to encourage people to check in on neighbors, especially if you're in an area that still has a power outage. And again, would like to just reiterate my thanks to the entire town staff for responding to what has been a very complicated weather event. So really appreciate that. And I also want to extend my thanks to them for their support throughout the year. Now, this is a growing town, and, you know, that comes with a lot of responsibility and new activities, new tasks. And I've been excited to see the town step up where needed throughout the year. So really appreciate all of the employees in town and the work that they put in this year. Others have mentioned it, but there are a few gift-giving days or gift-buying days maybe left before Christmas. And I would like to encourage people to consider Bridgewater. And I would like to encourage people to consider Bridgewater businesses for that, um, either a gift or potentially a gift certificate. Um, it's a great way to support local businesses and uh, let them know that you appreciate them picking Bridgewater as, as their home. I think uh, maybe I'll just, just leave us with, with just the reminder that, you know, communities are built by the people who care about them. Um, and uh, you know, this is an incredible community. And if you look at the Common and you look at the streets that are decorated, and you look at the people that volunteer their time uh, to put up, uh, build and put up decorations, uh, you can tell that, you know, our community cares quite a bit. Um, so I would just encourage everyone to, to continue putting that energy into the community, and I promise you, if you do, you will get it back. Uh, so thank you all. Appreciate it. Uh, with that, I would entertain, uh, we have no executive session. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, say nay. Motion passes. We are adjourned.
Land speed record.